Oh, you did?
Danny's too brave, she's all the men. I think it spell a hard word. She's making it. Yeah, he's loving his new job.
Okay, it's now five thirty. We'll bring the town council meeting to order here on Thursday, January fifteenth, two thousand twenty-six. Roll call, Scotty Long, I'm here. Bob Reinhardt?
Here.
Stacy?
Here.
Sandra Hicks? Okay, so we'll take the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is being recorded. Anyone who speaks is given permission to be recorded and posted to our YouTube channel and the town website. Virtual participation is not monitored, so you can virtually watch the meeting, but if you need or want to speak, you must be here in person. First agenda item is the minutes from the eighth executive session.
The twelve thirty-one twenty-five regular public meeting and the executive session. Any motion in second?
Uh, you have a motion?
I'm making a motion, wait, second.
Uh, second. Um, what about do another motion? I'll make a motion on the, uh, um, the executive session.
I'll second.
Then I'll be on one.
Okay. Um, January claims docket for five hundred and six thousand two hundred and ten dollars and fourteen cents.
I sent you guys an email and explained that the majority of that was for our sewer bonds that we had to pay. They, they came out on May first.
Need a motion?
I'm making a motion, wait, exactly.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Uh, sewer adjustments?
Fender port balance.
Gosh darn, fender port balance. For five million nine hundred and eighty thousand seven twenty-seven and thirteen cents. Any motion to accept the fender port balance?
I'm making a motion to accept.
Alright, we'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're ready for the sewer adjustments. Uh, sewer adjustment request form for eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Were there any questions? Would everybody look at these adjustments?
Uh, no questions. I'm making a motion, wait, accept that.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
You want to decide on that one?
Um, January adjustment report, uh, thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-five forty because of the bill there in our software.
Yeah, did you get that email? Why did that? Yeah.
I was one of the people, so I got the call.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so whenever they, they did our, they took our ordinance and they put in, huh, sorry, they put in our, um, rates, and when they did, they moved the decimal point over one spot to many, and it tripled the people. Anybody that used five thousand gallons or more, it tripled their, tripled their water, uh, not consumption, but their water. So we had to go in, they fixed the error, so it won't happen again, but we had to manually go in and fix all those peoples. So that's, that's the reflection of what we did.
I'll make a motion to approve the billing adjustments.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have anyone particularly that we need to talk about? Okay, citizens' concerns, um, anybody who would like to speak, a community prior?
It's me. I can come up here, yes.
Yep.
Okay, I'm Lisa. Um, just real quick, uh, back to Christmas, I don't think I've been here since Christmas. We had about boxes at the town hall of ours and the union township. Anyway, with the help of people, we ended up with around ninety gifts, so we helped twelve families. So they came in and Jessica set it up like a little store and the parents got the pick. So for the first year and Stacy and I quickly doing this, I felt like we did pretty good for ninety gifts. So, um, Halloween week is Sunday, October twenty-fifth through November first. I'm assuming we still have it for that week.
I'll see if you want to know.
Okay, now, and then my other thing is, um, on November twenty-eighth, on local Saturday, we would like to know if we could have the shelter house brick one, number one, and put on a kids event similar to what we do at Halloween, make it free, we'll have crafts, cookies to make, and, um, Max, the dog from Grinch, will be our visitor for that day.
Now, what will that event be again?
Um, it's shop local day, so you know how we do the thing for the kids at Halloween, we'd like to start doing something for them for Christmas too. Hopefully we get people to maybe do a cookie decorating, a craft, um, I guess, I need permission.
Huh? What date, what are you thinking?
The twenty-eighth, that's shop local day. So they already are doing things around the county anyway, so we thought that would be a good day to do that for the kids too.
I'm sorry, Lisa, are you saying shop local?
Yeah, I consider it shop local day. So, we just thought, I guess I need permission. We are willing to pay for it if we need to, that's up to you guys for that day.
I don't see you, at least you have to pay for that.
Yeah, if Bob's making a motion for you to not have to pay for that day, I'll second that.
Well, making that motion, yes.
All those in favor?
I think as far as the Halloween weekend, the run will still be the same, booth apart will be the same, and the haunt will be the Friday, Saturday night.
So if you could come in, you know, let us know those things are coming.
I try to come all the time, but through Christmas, it got crazy for me.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you tell us everything in January, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I will call the town hall tomorrow and make sure all them dates are down.
Okay.
Tuesday, sorry, I'll be up there. Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you, Lisa.
And church.
Hey, uh, I'm here and I, uh, so I recently got into hobby of metal detecting, and so I go online looking for tips, and the first thing I run into, they say that, you need to make sure you get permission wherever you go. So in my head, I tend to go to the park and, uh, scan it and I'll try it out. So afterward, I stopped by the town hall to ask permission, and she said, well, you probably should come to the meeting and ask for permission there. So, this is me asking permission to, to use the, you know, metal detector, the, I guess, at the parks or the town property.
Just the general public areas of the park essentially, like, do you plan to get on ball fields or anything?
I would imagine, no.
Okay. Uh, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Are you gonna dig?
No, I just walked around.
No, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, if I, if I hit something, I, I, it won't be very deep, and, and I, there's all kinds of best practices, so like, uh, uh, you know, put the grass back where it was when it's done, like, you, you should be able to tell that I've been there. I'm not gonna like do some soccer practice or anything like that, or, you know, uh, I'm on the manager and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, obviously, we wouldn't wanna be able to tell that you've been here, so. Alright, sounds good.
Randy told me the other day that, um, somebody was doing that at the water plant.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a story. It's not a public, uh,
Yeah.
Not a publicly acceptable area.
Actually, our water pool, I guess, out by the trash, we're all in water.
Um, unfinished business.
Well, we have, we have another.
Oh, we got another one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I won't be able to stand it.
But that's okay, there we are.
I have some pictures.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. Our neighbor, he burns trash in that container, and as you can see, one side is roting, and he burns cardboard and everything else in there, and sometimes the planes shoot four or five feet up in the air, and sometimes he's burning trash at two or three o'clock in the morning. And he has all those leaves, and I'm concerned that that fire will get out and catch all those leaves on fire. And he, he never cleans up his yard, his leaves all blow, blow over into our yard.
Where they gonna burn on?
Can't do it in the morning, you can't do it, you can't burn leaves, uh, you can't burn at two or three o'clock in the morning. Right? Can't burn after four o'clock.
Four, four, do, do, but do we specify?
Can't burn trash.
Do we specify the kind of container that they have to have, it has?
Yeah.
There's, but we're gonna have.
A metal container with a mesh lid, um, unless you're having a wiener roast. But gee, you can't, you can only burn wood, you can't burn cardboard, you can't. You can only burn like sticks. Do you wanna look at that? No?
He also has a old car. He also has an old car sitting on the north side of his house, and he's filled full of trash. It has no license on it, he puts the address, seven zero eight, eighty drive.
Said he has trash.
In his car, it's all in, in a car.
Cars that are sitting and, uh, so, uh, there you want to take a look, eighty drive and speed with one. We'll take, we'll see what it looks like, both with the burning ordinance in the vehicle.
Is there anything to be done about it, his leaves, that he just, they just blow over in our yard, our yard is, I cleaned it all up.
Mother nature. I said, mother nature's gonna blow them leaves in.
Can't make him pick up the leaves. Unfortunately.
You could ask him to.
Well, he also, another thing he does, he sits out on his patio in the back, and he plays music so loud that we can hear it in our family over on TV. And I asked him to, uh, turn it down, because we didn't hear, his comment was, I can play it as loud as I want to till nine o'clock, and not a damn thing you could do about it.
The noise ordinance does start at nine, I thought it was ten actually.
There's no, there's no time.
There's no time?
No, and I don't know that we have an ordinance that covers anything but vehicles, our ordinance is, the noise ordinance, for using is a vehicle.
Oh, 'cause I remember talking when they did that thing at the brick house. I thought there was a certain time they had to shut it down.
If it's too loud, it's too loud, I might as well time it. But, but not, there are no town ordinance for it. My state laws, this already come, but, but, so it is. I called the sheriff's department, they told me that if it could be heard across property lines, it was too loud. They came down and asked him to turn it down, he turned it down, but ten minutes after they left, he turned it up louder. And then he came over and asked why I called the police, and I think he had, was a little bit, I can't, I shouldn't say that, but I, I think he was degrading the way he acted.
Um, I think you should continue to call in that situation.
Well, I haven't, and a lot of times they said they have more important ones than that, and they'll get to them if they can, and I understand that, you know.
Would they just call you guys if it's in Fort Branch?
If it's working.
If you're working?
Yeah.
Okay.
They said there was nobody on duty here, right? County, nobody, nobody, they're asking, we won't make the ordinance in Fort Branch. They said that was a county ordinance, not a state law, county and state.
Yeah, unfortunately, our hands are tied, we just have to keep going and hopefully get some resolution out of that after some repeats.
They said after three times, it could be, three warnings and then he's arrested.
There you go, we can't do any more than that. But we will look into the, the fire thing and the, and the car out front storing garbage, okay? Alright. Uh, anything else? Any new citizens' concerns? Alright, then, on to unfinished business, I know Sandy's working on the, uh, getting an alley boat?
Yeah, but I asked her that, about the utilities out in that alley, and her comment was, we would need a utility easement for the alley, we have to have a survey completed, I'm glad you found an ordinance, well, I told her it, that's another story.
Okay.
So that's, that's, uh,
Where we're at.
That's still working for our guys, I guess.
So, long story short, it may not be as simple as, um, closing the alley and needing it, there may also be.
Can't need it.
Or, uh, Oh yeah, when we close it, that will.
It'll divide it to both properties.
Put it to both sides.
But we have to have a utility easement.
Well, we were told, told that it had to be surveyed. Sandy told us that. Before we could do anything, I thought.
Well, it'll definitely have to be for the utility, even though it might be. Um, new business, proposal for the HEC union at the town hall.
So, uh, our heat has gone out twice, and they have it, um, fixed for now, but if it gets really cold spell, it's probably not gonna work again. And so they sent us this, um, quote, and it is for, um, there's, I sent them a note, or I sent them an email on the back of that too, to make sure I understood it correctly. And it's for the heating and the air, and it's on the town hall side, it's not the, the police side, there's a separate unit. So, and it's called a twine unit?
Twining?
Correct.
It's twining because they have two furnaces, uh, going.
Twining unit, I thought it's the twining unit.
It's twining, that's when you tie two units into one duct system.
Yeah.
Um, and with the one large twining system.
So the amount on that one is nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars.
So they, they wanna twine it again, or put in one big system that they?
No, I think they're putting it back the way it was.
You would get more than one bed?
No, that's the people who take care of it and have taken care of it since it's been the bank, they know all about that system.
Alright, well, there's the quote. I'll make a motion when we move forward.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I have one vote on there, how it would get paid for. I split it three ways, between, um, edit and water replacement and with your replacement.
Sounds good. Uh, Sandra's also working on the ordinance for no parking on the south side of our.
That's where. So when Daryl and I were talking about this evening, um, Sandy had made one up, and I made some changes to it, and we were making sure that everything was in there, and whenever we did that, we found an existing ordinance, twenty twenty dash one, so we already have an ordinance for that.
Really? That mean does it run from main to the west?
Yeah.
Both curbs?
The order is this, from Main Street to the Downstreet on the south side, it also said it needs to be signed to the.
I'm gonna blame Adam Bledsoe for this. Okay, then, well.
The only thing to leave is the sign.
Yep.
On the north side of Main Street, up towards Main Street, there's a spot, uh, for no parking, because the people have to drive around it, or if they're coming west, they have to drive around those cars, they park on the north side, and then you can get back over to stop them. So there's a, a one section.
Section.
There that's painted yellow. Whether it's the sign that says, no parking here at the corner, because that yellow paint, Michael.
They might have protected the sign. So do you that, so when we install the signage on the south side, we need to also do that up there on the painted curbs on the north side?
That should be, we don't give them.
Yeah. Do we need to make a motion on the signs, or?
No, because it already says it in the ordinance.
Okay. That's good.
Is that by Harley?
Apparently that's been brought in for a while.
If there's no parking, if the, if the sign's not put, you can't do it.
I turned around the other night, I couldn't get through the other night, had a backup to stop sign, and I thought I was wondering.
It's a real problem right now, yeah.
But one of the trucks had wide mirrors on it, and they're.
Unfortunately, that truck will be there most of the time, she lives there.
It was on the face side though? Okay.
Yeah, that's because she put it on her side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that explains.
We do have parking in the back of the house.
You say there's not enough name for it out there, I don't know.
It's a big truck, maybe not for that truck.
It's a big truck.
Um, department head reports for Andy's not here.
He was getting a prize from Caliber on those, um, not the park bathroom, but the shelter house number, um, three.
Yeah, he talked about that last night.
And he hasn't gotten that back yet. And then the bucket truck, I don't think he's got anything on the bucket truck yet either.
Yeah, we wanted to look at, we asked him to look at when that was electrically rated.
Yeah. So, but since we just met fifteen days ago.
And I'm still gonna, I'm gonna email close in and point people, I just haven't.
Okay.
Um, I just wanna see what they say, where the cost and all that stuff.
Yeah, I had a complaint today about, they were really disappointed that the snowplats weren't put up, and, and so I told her that, um, it's not, because we don't wanna put them up, because we spent a lot of money on those snowplats, we just are not able to put them up until a contract can be signed, and we have to do it their way, so.
Right, and I, I just have questions about the electrical hookups that are bad, if they're gonna push us to, you know, light poles only, and they're not fitted for electrical, who does that, at what cost?
Yeah, he did tell me that they can only be put on streetlights, they cannot be put on the other parts.
Saying that, so, those are questions that I will ask, and
Okay.
we'll see what we can do, what we can't do, and what the contract looks like, and how much it costs, and if they're gonna be due, or if they're gonna charge. You know, in my business, there are pole attachments that aren't, can be expensive, so, um, police department, uh, thank you very much for this, Daryl, anything specific?
The only other thing I have is a technical question, somebody even have a question?
Oh, nice, yeah.
Yeah, and then, um, I have, I've been in touch with the Evansville Courier on that, and so I sent her the information that she needed, she sent me an email, it went to Junk Mount. And so then I sent her the information today, so she's gonna put something together tomorrow, one thing that we forgot to put on it is you have to reside in Gibson County to be a police officer. We gotta fix that, but other than that, we're gonna get it out.
I, I think we should, actually, at least in Gibson County, if you guys wanna make it closer, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Um.
Did you say you ran it in D, or you were, or you're not, or?
I haven't done it yet, I put it on, um, our, I put it on our Facebook page, I put it in Princeton Courier, um, Daryl took it to the.
Yes. That's awesome, I think that'll be good.
So I haven't done a D yet, I know that, um, there is a cost, and it's pretty high. Just to put it into Princeton paper, it was like three hundred and twenty-four dollars. So, I don't know what that until it's gonna be, and then we'll put it on, um, a website as well, a job website, so, I was waiting to hear back from that.
Alright, hopefully that helps a little bit, uh, water department, Fred, anything?
I don't have anything, Brad.
Um, you know anything, um, about the ladder situation into the tube on the strange street water?
We haven't heard anything.
Haven't heard anything back? Alright. Um, sewer department, you wanna cover that?
You got any question?
I don't think there's anything.
Don't have anything, um, Stacy, we have no town attorney? Um.
Miscellaneous is what I, I have this.
On miscellaneous, we have.
A declaratory resolution.
Okay. So, was, that was on Monday, the redevelopment on commission, they did issue a declaratory resolution about moving forward with a new Potoka Union TIF. Um, there's a, there's a bond involved, I don't know the amount of money off of the top of my head, that they would, they would like to plan, or, or fund with the TIF, um, this council has talked about it, and we've talked about it with the township, and, um, both of, both of us collectively are opposed to the TIF, on how it stands, um, I've communicated with members of the redevelopment commission in regards to our opposition, um, shoot, sorry, Larry is on that. And, um, so he's received, received our feedback, um,
Who knows?
Uh, Larry here. Um, I've also talked to Tim Armstrong, um, I emailed him my thoughts, um, as regarding how Georgetown protected different things over the last thirty years versus how Gibson County's done things over thirty years, um, and how both communities kinda started out very similar, and how Georgetown has been extremely more successful than Gibson County, and probably one of the major factors in that, um, is this TIF, and I would hate to see them make the same mistake twice. Um, could, because it's a twenty-five to thirty-year mistake, um, we believe, um, as a unit that is funded by those tax dollars, that we could benefit from some of those tax dollars right now, not hope that somebody. Not hope that somebody feels kind enough to throw some money our way at the end of thirty years. Um, you know, they like to talk about all the stuff that was done. Well, you got this, and you got this, and you got this at the end of the TIF, but the question is, at what cost? What, what was the cost? If we had had that tax base and that revenue over thirty years, we probably could have done those projects that they so gracefully did for us. Very grateful for what we got, but we probably could have funded those four or five times over if we had actually had some of that revenue base instead of all of it scraped off the table and thrown into the TIF bucket. Um, one possible solution is asking them to pass through a portion of that, which is a, a very common practice throughout the state of Indiana, to pass through a portion of those dollars. You know, back to the town, the township, the library, um, fire protection, and South Gibson School Corporation. Um, it's interesting that North Gibson just recently published a video on Facebook um, about the new multi-sport facility that they're gonna build, similar to the one we're building at Gibson Southern, except it's, I would say probably two times, uh, as, as intricate as the one they're gonna build at Gibson Southern. And the reason they're gonna do that, at least at the end of their own video, they talked about because of the expiration of the TIF and the increase in their tax base, they're gonna be able to fund that, not only fund that facility, but lower their tax rate. Um, so North Gibson's really excited about the old TIF going away. And, um, I keep talking to people at South Gibson and I, I'm not sure if they fully understand the impact that this thing's gonna have.
Why won't they, why won't they have it? Because it's Potoka and Indiana.
I know. You would think that, um, it would continue to affect North Gibson, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
It, it's a timing thing. Uh, I don't fully understand it myself, but I know the, the way they start the TIF, you know, or the date they started and when they look at the assessed values and the equipment and all the things that go into what you can tax Toyota for, somehow North Gibson's ended up, ended up better off. Or they, they didn't anticipate a second TIF. I don't, I really don't know. I haven't talked to anybody from North Gibson, but they say it in their own video, this is great that the TIF's expired. Uh, now we have this tax base to build this great facility, so either, you know, if they know, either they know more than us or they just didn't anticipate, um, the second, the second TIF. Um, so, all of that said, I've um, pinned a, like, a document here that, a letter that I, I would like to see at least the town, the township, maybe the library, um, maybe the school corp, I don't know. I've reached out to a couple of board members. I haven't received calls back. Um, it would be great if we could lock ons on the same documentation, the, the same, uh, thoughts. Um, without the things you were, just some, just a few high points from, this, this is just a proposed rough draft letter that I threw together. But some of the things that I suggest are immediate pass-through of a significant percentage of property tax increment to overlapping taxing units, which I just discussed, just discussed. Number two, any period of elevated capture must be short-term, not exceeding five years, and must never reach a hundred percent. I say in number three, the RDC should avoid repeating historic problems associated with the original Toyota TIF, which diverted growth from schools, fired EMS, library services, Fort Branch, and Union Township for more than two decades. Uh, number four, a full public breakdown of bond repayment schedules. Anticipated TIF revenues, administrative allowances, and proposed public improvements must be provided before final approval. And number five, the RDC should amend the declaratory resolution if necessary to enhance balanced revenue distribution and long-term community sustainability. Indiana law does not require a one-hundred percent capture. And I believe that was kind of alluded to at the meeting, that is not true. A partial pass-through is legal, financially sound, and essential for the stability of local units to meet the immediate service demands created by this new project. So, those are my thoughts. Um, that's all I have. Yeah, and I, I brought multiple copies of this. If anybody wants to look at it.
You need people to go there. You need people to go there. You need support.
Yeah, so I think everybody should go to the, um, RDC meeting on the ninth. It's at, what time is it?
Six.
Six or six-thirty?
Six.
It's at six?
At, at one oh seven South Hart Street, there's the Old Clarion Building.
One oh seven South Hart Street, the Old Clarion Building. The ninth at six o'clock. They're gonna take public comment, but here's the thing. Hopefully the comment is compelling enough that the RDC members at least decide to table it, because if not, right after that meeting, they will go to uh, a confirmation, a resolution, and that'll be it. I mean, it'll be all over, but the fat lady's hanging at that point.
So are they wanting to change zoning to benefit?
This has no
It has nothing to do with that?
Nothing to do with zoning.
Because it kind of goes together when you read some of this stuff. And that's what I was trying to figure out there today.
I don't think there's any threat of zoning tied to the TIF.
Okay.
There is, there is, uh, uh, there is mention of developing a comprehensive plan, which is free zoning.
There you have it. Yep.
Um, it's, it's a little bit questionable. I would thought that it was going to go to the county commissioners after the declaratory reso- after the
Okay, Karen.
The second, uh, uh, vote. But according to the meeting, uh, Monday night, it's supposed to be going to county commissioners this next Tuesday, third Tuesday. It's either the third Tuesday of January or the third Tuesday of February. And, and it was announced, it was the third Tuesday, it was the, it's next Tuesday night at four forty-five.
They, that's because they want their blessing before the public hearing, because after the public hearing, if there's no objection from you and your members, they're gonna pass it. They're gonna put it through.
So it'd be good to have a good showing at four forty-five Tuesday night at, at the commissioner's meeting.
What is the date?
Uh, January twentieth, I think. It's the second, it's the third Tuesday.
January twentieth?
Uh, 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 January twentieth.
Same building at four thirty, right?
At four forty-five.
Four forty-five.
But, but, okay, four, sorry, I think it's four forty-five.
January twentieth, four forty-five is the commissioners' meeting. Same building?
Yes. Kind of takes two out of three commissioners to prove it.
Just for the people who don't know here, Larry, how many people are on the redevelopment commission?
Five.
Five. And how many votes does it take to ratify something?
Three.
Three at the top.
What about the letter that, um, was given or, um, asking for?
So, so the township provided a letter, Jessica put together a letter, that we agreed to, um, put our name on, that said if, if a TIF, if a new TIF is created, um, that there should be South Gibson, or at least Union Township representation, um, on the redevelopment commission. So I, that's really kind of secondary to this. We're gonna see where all this goes first.
That must not secondary. Uh, uh, it was tabled, um, because the county council, so had they wanted to investigate it more. And, and so it was tabled to the next meeting, and that is the second Tuesday morning at nine o'clock.
Okay.
And, uh, it'd be nice.
Right. I mean, it is a Potoka Union TIF, so that only makes sense.
He's got a question.
Yes, sir.
Explain what TIF is exactly.
It's tax, I may get this wrong, but tax incremental funding. So, it's, I'm gonna really dumb this down, not more for me, for you, than for you, but they, they draw, they will draw a map essentially and, um, set that area up for capturing the taxes in that area and set it aside for projects associated with developing that area for business. Essentially what it's supposed to do.
In thirty years.
Yeah.
Twenty-five years this one?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five, for, for twenty-five years. And a lot of good projects came out of the first one, but you just, you know, when they did the first one, there was nothing but farm ground out there and county roads, right? So a lot of development was done to support Toyota from an infrastructure perspective. With regard to the new battery plant and the things that, at least that we've been told are gonna go in, it shouldn't need to be, at least, there shouldn't need to be quite the development, not anywhere near the development, on the same scale as was done the first. Um, you can still make the argument that a TIF is needed, but at a hundred percent capture, what that means is all of that revenue goes into the TIF generated by, um, the taxes and how they, um, in- incrementally go up as assessed values go up. All of that, when it's a hundred percent capture, they keep all of it. Um, our argument is, and it's common practice throughout the state to set those up like eighty percent capture, twenty percent pass-through, or seventy percent capture, thirty percent pass-through. Or fifty-fifty for that matter, after the bond's paid off, for example. So that that tax revenue would flow to the town of Fort Branch, to the township, to the library, uh, to fire protection, and to South Gibson School Corporation. I mean, I don't know how anybody in good conscience could sit up there and vote against the kids, like Gibson Southern High School. They just need a hundred percent capture. I, I don't know how it's possible. I don't know how anybody could look the community in the eye and do that. But that's just me.
We all agree.
So, any other comments? Okay. We will adjourn this meeting at six twelve. I need a motion in a second.
Make a motion, William.
A second. Hello, some favor?
Hi.
Hi.
It's next one nineteen. Yeah. Um, will you shut that off? Please.